Welcome to the Monday, October 17th, 2022 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the deputy city clerk please call the roll?
Admiral Mayor Henan.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Nillit.
Here.
Alderman Rom.
Here.
Alderman Notes is absent. Alderman Freshland.
Here.
Alderman Gassarian.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Alderman Weller.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome, everyone. I just had a flashback to my visit from the third graders from Cherokee School last Thursday or Friday where we went through the whole opening of the city council and they had a very hard time guessing what the first thing we do is at a city council meeting until I explained to them that it's something they do every day and it had something to do with the flag and then it was, ooh, ooh, ooh. So, but it's one of the most fun things I get to do as mayor is bring them in here and have them speculate on where we're going to put the pictures one day when we run out of space, so, and how much the mayor gets paid. It's a great, I've got some great stories for cocktails going long into the future. The other thing I'd like to touch on is, I don't know how many of you were able to attend the Public Safety Open House yesterday at the Public Safety Building, but I think it's probably a reflection of all the new families that have moved into town, but it was mobbed. And I got there about an hour and a half after it started and they had already run out of hot dogs and they were just about out of popcorn and it was great. They tore a Volvo station wagon apart with the Jaws of Life and, you know, it was just a wonderful event, very, very well attended, and I think everybody really enjoyed themselves. So it's worth going next year if you didn't get there this year. And a real tribute to the professionalism and the caliber of our police and firefighters and the equipment that they have at their disposal. You know, the rescue boat is brand new, there's a brand new ambulance, all of this has been done with surprisingly small amounts of money, so worth a visit if you have the opportunity next year. Next thing on my set of comments is another national award that the staff has earned. The City of Lake Forest has been awarded the Community Sustainability Program Excellence Award from the International City County Management Association, or ICMA, for the Rethink Recycling Campaign. To receive national recognition for this homegrown campaign is a testament to the dedication of all those involved in the program, as well as the city council for your leadership and commitment to sustainability initiatives. Only three communities in the whole country received the Program Excellence Award in community sustainability. Lake Forest, and Lake Forest was the only unit of government in the whole state of Illinois to receive any ICMA award this year. The Rethink Recycling Campaign has been successful in reducing the amount of contaminated material in the city's recycling stream, producing both environmental benefits and financial savings for the city. The program actually met its aggressive goal, and I could say for myself, I didn't think it was possible, reducing contamination from 25% two years ago to under 10%. And it's been a thorough effort with many players involved. It's been a public-private partnership that I will get into in a second. It was the result of staff in Public Works and the Office of the City Manager and Communication Departments, leadership from the Environmental Sustainability Committee and the city council, and the incredible generosity of the Lake Forest Garden Club. It's just the latest example of a successful public-private partnership that have become a hallmark of our city. The entire program was made possible thanks to the generosity of the Lake Forest Garden Club, who financed this initiative through a generous donation. Special thanks to the entire Lake Forest Garden Club, especially the representatives here tonight, Lauren Dixon, Mia Armour, Kitty Lansing, Sophie Twitchell, and Marion Cartwright. Marion Cartwright and her family foundation also contributed specifically toward the campaign. Special thanks to Marcus Norman of Norman Design, the local branding and design firm who brought Bart the Kart to life, and the city staff, the superintendent of Public Works, Dan Martin, assistant to the Public Works Director, Jim Lockaffier, sanitation supervisor Brian Pagacznik, former assistant city manager, Mike Strong, communications manager Dana Olson, and our summer interns, who did the curbside audits, which was another part of the program, Jennifer Komerska, Shelby Saratella, Samantha Rubin, and Alma Mackich. It's a true Lake Forest success story, with city council support, the community's spirit of philanthropy, and staff execution all coming together. So I'd like to invite everybody I just mentioned up behind the fence here for a photo opportunity.
Here, let's stand. We'll have to stand up if we can't. Thank you. Hi, hi, everybody.
How you doing?
I'm gonna hide it back like I always do. Okay, I'm behind tall people, that's very helpful. I like that.
He'll fix it.
This is so exciting.
Photographer usually fixes it.
Who, me? On my toes. Really, I'm as tall as you now.
Not quite. Not quite.
I'm barely visible, I'm sure.
Everybody just one step this way.
That's okay.
One more.
Get you in between. Yeah, get you in between.
Okay, got it. Here you go. Then take a couple, make sure everybody's looking. All right? Got it?
Thank you.
Very good.
So we actually have Dan Martin from the staff to give us a brief overview of the program for those who aren't familiar or somehow missed it.
So Bart the Kart couldn't make it?
Yeah, where is Bart the Kart?
We tried, but no.
Dan didn't want to wear the uniform today.
I couldn't find anyone.
Thank you very much. Just like, Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, I just got a quick overview, just to talk about the campaign and to talk about the wonderful outcomes. Like many communities, Lake Forest had a recycling contamination problem. Nearly 25% of what was recycled curbside was not actually recyclable, increasing recycling processing costs. We needed to lower the contamination rates to ensure the economic viability of the city's recycling program, knowing how important recycling is to the community and the environment. To address this challenge, the city focused on enhancing the quality of its recycling materials to help reduce processing cost increases. Lake Forest Garden Club provided $110,000 two-year grant to the City of Lake Forest for development of a recycling education program. The Public Works Department and the Lake Forest Garden Club partnered with Norman Design Company to develop a communication strategy and integrated creative campaign. The city launched the Rethink Recycling Campaign in January of 2020, a two-year marketing and civic educational program aimed to reduce the residential recycling contamination rate from 25% to 10%. The Rethink Recycling Campaign aimed to leverage social media, online, and interactive engagement platforms to change the recycling behaviors of residents using an animated spokesperson, Spokesperson, Bart the Kart. Bart the Kart was created to provide a voice for the campaign in a fun and easy way to appeal to adults and children. The messaging focused on four easy-to-follow guidelines designed to target the largest contamination culprits. The campaign also featured new print resources, brochures, and signage, and face-to-face outreach at youth programs and pop-ups at different community events like Concert in the Square to reinforce campaign messaging. One of the things that made the campaign so successful was the Rethink Recycling interns. The interns conducted outreach at youth programs and camps and also conducted curbside recycling cart audits. As mentioned, one of the Rethink Recycling interns' main responsibility was the curbside recycling cart checks that looked for contaminated items. When items were found, the interns would tag them and leave an oops tag that indicated what items weren't acceptable and why. This part of the campaign used education, the oops tags, as a way to promote behavioral change, and it worked. Over the two-year period, contamination rates fell from 25% in 2020 to 18% in 2021. Then, in the second year of the campaign, rates continued to fall below 10% in 2022. That's a 15% reduction in contamination in just over two years. The reduction in contamination has already saved the city over 50,000 annually in recycling processing costs, with additional savings expected to continue into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for, thanks to everybody who was involved in this huge success. The cost of recycling, we used to make money on recycling. Then that all changed and it became a significant drain on our finances, so any questions for Dan?
Thank you.
Alderman Weber.
Sorry, I've lost my voice, but really exciting, and I was just curious, Dan, with this initiative that was established, is it going to continue? Is there any sort of plan for continued education, or does it stop here?
Yes, I definitely believe so. Whether we keep Bart the Kart, I think it's a, we'd like to do that very much, so we'll be looking for ways to continue this program, specifically the audits, yeah, so.
Great.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated in this program, and special thanks to the garden club as well. It's a real success story, and also the number of audits that were performed by the interns is just remarkable. The percentage of households that they covered, we have about, what, 7,200 households, and they covered 2,000 of them? I just think that's remarkable. And so again, thank you, and I remember being on the Public Works Committee and hearing those early reports before we had this program and watching films of people picking through the recycled trash and throwing out things, and our contamination rate was so high and we were paying so much money. And to transform it into this is just remarkable, and it just shows what good people can do when they work together, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you, Dan. Congratulations once again. Next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. This is specifically for things that are not on our agenda tonight. If there's anybody that would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item. Okay? Seeing none. Next item is items for omnibus vote consideration. There are six tonight. First is approval of the October 3rd, 2022 city council meeting minutes. Second is acknowledgement of receipt of the fiscal year 2022 treasurer's report. Third is award of contract with advanced tree care for an amount not to exceed $52,000 to extend MPI tree pruning services for tree pruning in fiscal year 2023. Fourth is approval to purchase nine 420-class sailboats from Simmons Boatworks in an amount not to exceed $60,000. Fifth is consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the building review board, first reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. And sixth is consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the zoning Board of Appeals, first reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. Are there any questions, any items that any member of the council would like to have taken separately or removed?
Could I ask a question?
Alderman Bushman, sure.
On the item in connection with the tree pruning services, a question came up several months ago about how we might have been falling behind in maintaining the tree pruning of our cities with the ideal of being about every seven years cycle. How are we doing in, and will this help us achieve a, you know, a tree pruning service that is a good service?
Yeah, we did talk about that, and as of right now, the amount that we're asking for is similar to last year. It's a little bit more, so we're not going to gain a lot on this. It is based on the diameter of the tree, so we use our tree inventory to figure out what we can get done for this amount. We will do more, but it's not going to get us a whole lot further in our goal to be seven or eight years in a cycle. Right now, we're currently at about 11-year cycle, so we have more work to do on that. Keep in mind that the amount that we're asking includes about 1,200 trees. It may end up being more. If approved tonight, our city forestry staff will work on selecting the actual trees, and we'll get as many as we can. But also keep in mind that our city staff does do some pruning every year based on conditions. We can, we hope to get another 1,000 out of that, but usually it falls short of that. So we're working on that. One last note, too, is we are updating our tree inventory. It's been something we've been working on for a number of months. We expect to finish it by the end of the year. It's going to allow us to revise the number of prunable trees or ones that we would want to prune, so we'll be coming back in the future to tell you, we may make some headway on our goal there as well.
As you say in your write-up, the process maintains its increased value and maintains its numerous environmental and community benefits, among which are increased property values, and I would add the beauty that we like to experience here in our city, so we do encourage this continued program. And you should know, it does a nice job you folks did in inventorying the trees and putting them on your website to see what trees we have in our right-of-way throughout the city.
Yep, great.
And I'll just note for the council, I believe that came up at the March Budget Workshop. I could be wrong on that, and the amount requested tonight is reflective of what the maximum amount included in the current fiscal year budget. Staff is happy to evaluate whether it makes sense to recommend an increase to that budget amount as we begin the budget preparation process for FY '24. We'll certainly balance that with other competing needs and priorities, but happy to take a look at it when we come back to you guys next March to look at the next fiscal year operating budget.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve the omnibus items.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Weller.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Nillit.
Aye.
Alderman Rom.
Aye.
Alderman Freshland.
Aye.
Alderman Gassarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Seven, eight, zero, eight, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is old business. We have two items of old business tonight. First is consideration of a settlement agreement in the matter of 361 Westminster LLC and the 705 North McKinley Development LLC versus City of Lake Forest and various other parties. This is an approval by motion, and I have a few comments that I'd like to make before we dive into this issue. Tonight, the city council is asked to consider a settlement agreement pertaining to the third phase of the McKinley condominium development. I believe that it is time for the council to take a leadership role in moving this issue proactively and positively to resolution. Approval of the settlement agreement is the first step in that process. In my opinion, this agreement represents a positive outcome from the city's efforts to improve the plan for this property. The outcome of the litigation is unknown and months away. After all parties have endured continued hearings and spent considerable additional funds, it is possible that the very building that the city council voted to deny could be constructed on the site. Some of the development decisions made by the courts in the past have not served Lake Forest well. I believe it is important to retain control over these decisions at the local level. The settlement agreement represents compromise on the part of both the developer and the city. Importantly, it provides a process for taking the current plan, a single, large condominium building fronting the Westminster streetscape, off the table. In my opinion, the conceptual site plan presented as part of the settlement agreement is far superior to the rejected plan that is now before the court. The settlement agreement recognizes that the revised plan requires review at public hearings before the Plan Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission, providing the opportunity for public input and transparency. It is my hope that the reviews through the Plan Commission and the HPC will be handled expeditiously and with diligence. The window of opportunity for resolving this litigation at the local level is small. It is in the city's best interest to take advantage of it. The settlement agreement is included in the council packet. The key points are as follows. A single-family home will be located on the Westminster streetscape in direct response to concerns that a two-story masonry condominium building is not consistent with the neighborhood or the entrance to the historic district. At the city's instigation, the overhead utility wires and poles along the west side of the property, highly visible from the Westminster streetscape and neighboring homes, will be eliminated and the wires buried. The revised condominium building will be smaller, still two stories, but shorter in length than the previous plan. The third condominium building will have a minimized presence on the streetscape. Although it will have some visibility from Westminster, it will be far less prominent than the other condominium buildings in the immediate area. Publicly accessible green space to the north of the library and pedestrian access to the library through the condominium development are preserved. The purchase price is reduced, recognizing that construction of two buildings instead of one increases costs. Also, the modified condominium building will have a maximum of six or seven units rather than eight. Over time, Lake Forest will receive property taxes from this property that will more than offset any purchase price reduction. Being a city-owned property, this parcel currently generates no property taxes for the city or other taxing bodies like the school district. No city-imposed fees for permits or utility connections are being waived or reduced. And as with several other past developments in the city, a payment in lieu of an affordable unit on the site is required by the settlement agreement. This satisfies our affordable housing requirements. It is my hope that the city council will fully support the settlement agreement as presented tonight. The agreement sets forth a process through which the city can achieve a better plan for the property than the plan currently before the court. Following approval of the agreement tonight, I hope that the developers will see the council's action as both a sign of good faith and a commitment to have this revised plan moved promptly through the process. I recognize that the developers will be listening closely to the council's discussion and will make a determination as to whether or not the council appears committed to moving forward with a process that could avoid the uncertainty cost and time involved in continued litigation. I urge the council to approve the settlement agreement. Continued litigation is not in the best interest of the city. This settlement agreement deserves the city council's full support. Thank you. With that, I will introduce Kurt Asprey, who is the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Covered the main points of the settlement agreement, but just from the litigation perspective, we currently have several deadlines and briefing schedules that are in place as part of the settlement agreement. If it is approved, the litigation will be stayed until December 5th to allow the city to hear the revised plan at the HPC and the Plan Commission. After the public hearings have been held and any recommendations have been made, if the city ultimately approves the revised plan, then the existing lawsuit will be dismissed with prejudice, and that will wrap up the litigation there. So that's kind of the mechanics about the litigation and how it will be dismissed depending on the city's decision on the revised plan. Happy to answer any questions that the council may have about the specifics of the settlement agreement.
I actually have one question. Has anything changed with respect to the court in the last few weeks?
The one item that has changed, the judge that we currently had, or previously had, Judge Hoffman, he has retired and has been replaced with Judge Jacqueline Melius, so we do have a new judge in this matter.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the council? Alderman Morris.
I have some comments. I think, as most of us remember, I recused myself from the last vote last year, and the reason was is that as the president of the 705 Homeowners Association, I was in active discussions and negotiations with a developer about our building. And while technically I didn't have to do that recusal, I just thought it was in the best interest of the visibility and transparency that I do that. But that's behind us now. Our building is no longer involved with the developer, and I feel now we're just neighbors, so I'm prepared to vote going forward.
Other questions or comments? Alderman Bushman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. In terms of the settlement plan and looking at the site plan, it looks like we have three buildings, the so-called 715 condo building, 361 single-family home, and the 373 family home. Are all three of these buildings going to be matters that are going to go before the Plan Commission and the HPC as a package or individually?
I might defer to Kathy, but I believe the 373 building is not included as part of this revised plan, so that would be dealt with separately.
Okay, that's what we call the Donovan property to the east, but then it would include the, well, obviously the 361 because it is part of the city lots. And do I assume also that the site plan continues the 38 feet being included with the city lots as part of the, what I'll call the 361-715 property?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. The, when this matter goes before the Plan Commission and the HPC, we have a typical review process where there's discussion with the developer, suggestions made, differences talked about, considered, and sometimes, and many times, it does result in improvements to the plan that do come before the Plan Commission and the HPC. Is that sort of dialogue prohibited under the settlement agreement, or is it something that, you know, we, you know, would expect the Plan Commission, HPC to stand, continue with their standard protocols?
They would continue with their standard protocols. The settlement agreement does not bind the Plan Commission or the HPC to any type of special consideration in any way.
And I do recognize that when there is that dialogue at the commission level, obviously the developer can have input and can say yea or nay to whether that change is appropriate or not, but that would not upset the settlement agreement per se.
No, the settlement agreement does not limit the scope of review of the HPC or the Plan Commission.
Okay. In terms of the settlement agreement, there's a provision that deals with the bearing of the utilities and the fact that the city would undertake up to $250,000 reimbursement obligation. Where did that $250,000 come from? Is it targeted to be the cost of bearing those utilities?
I can jump in on that. Yes, it is. Certainly, it's an estimate, which is why it was worded in an amount not to exceed, but it was structured as a reimbursement so that the city would only reimburse for actual costs incurred.
And I take it the issue of those utilities did not come up in the development of Building One or Building Two because it was not on the property? Or was that, did an issue come up in any of the commissions on the utilities there?
Then I'm going to defer to Community Development Directors Ernie Ak on that.
For Buildings One and Two, the developers did bury...
For Buildings One and Two, the developers did bury utilities that crossed those two properties and actually some that went on to the church property. So some of the utilities were buried. The remaining utilities are on the city-owned property.
Okay, and that's the ones we're talking about? And it would be up to the developer to hire the contractors to do it and then submit the bills to us for reimbursement up to $250,000? That would be the understanding of the settlement agreement?
Correct.
Okay. In terms of the inclusionary housing requirements that we have and the fact that the proposal is to do a cash payment in lieu of affordable housing, what, how many units were we looking at as part of the condo three or Building Three development?
One unit would be required for the third building. You may recall there are already two affordable units that were constructed and are occupied in the first building.
Thank you for jumping ahead to my next question. And in terms of our code, it talks about to satisfy the payment in lieu, there needs to be a demonstration of satisfaction that will create something that's equal or greater in affordable housing. Would we go through that process too, you know, to make sure that we meet the standards under our affordable code?
I will defer to the city attorney.
This is deciding that in lieu of that requirement that's actually in the PSA for them to comply, that they would make this cash payment. And so this would be the council determining what that amount would be. As our code, the code provides that the council determines what the amounts will be for those cash in lieu payments. This would be that, the city council's determination of that amount.
And the funds would go into the affordable housing funds for further applications there?
Correct, into the Housing Trust Fund.
Another provision in the settlement talks about deleting Part Two, Section 4G in its entirety. In the write-up, we do not expand on what that deals with, you know, and 4G is titled "Improvement and Conveyance of the Parking Area." Is it a fair summary to say that under the PSA, the condo two owner, the 7-Eleven owner, was to design and construct without expense to the city an asphalt parking area for eight vehicles at basically the southeast corner of the 7-Eleven property and convey it to the city, again, without cost, and the conveyance was to occur by May 31, 2020? Is that a fair summary of what we're saying is no longer going to be a requirement because of the settlement agreement?
Yes, the PSA would be amended to remove the requirement to convey the parking area.
The so-called library parking area, and actually in the site plans, it's called the Library Site Expansion Parcel. It seems it was, you know, negotiated in the original PSA to be a benefit to the library, particularly with the library looking at major renovations and not knowing, you know, what footprint's going to work for the major renovations that the library would like to succeed with. Have we consulted with, or has the library board been consulted on the importance of this provision?
I've had the opportunity to discuss it with the library board, or with the library director and the library board president. I don't know that it has been discussed officially amongst the library board, but no significant concerns were shared with me.
And in terms of the settlement agreement, the other provision is reduction in the purchase price from $500,000 to $250,000. That is, I know the mayor, you commented on that in terms of their added cost, but their added cost is simply to drive a design and a proposal that satisfies the concerns that we've had, the standards that we've been looking at. And it is, in effect, you know, less money that the city's going to be paid for its property as a city asset. And I may have some other comments on that. But one last question I do have. At the last time this matter came before the council in September of 2021, and we had citizens speak out at that point in time, they ended up being named in litigation. There may be a question by our citizens now, to the extent they would speak up at this meeting, is there any concern that that would generate being named as a defendant in future litigation?
At the council meeting tonight, there's no risk of that. This is not, this is simply a public meeting. This isn't a public hearing. It's not subject to the Administrative Review Act. The reason they were named is that the HPC's considerations are subject to the Administrative Review Act, and that was why they were named as interested parties in that lawsuit.
Thank you. I appreciate that fact that we don't have any chilling effect here, but an open discussion.
Actually, on that subject, I'd like to point out too that we have been in regular communication ever since then with our state representative and our state senator, and I believe in the next session of the state legislature, one or both of them and others as well are committed to pursuing changes to that statute so that this kind of thing doesn't happen, you know, in the future. Alderman Preschlag.
I have a few questions, Kurt. Thanks. First, thanks for all of your advice and counsel on this, I guess, litigation and projects. It's been really invaluable. Just really appreciate your thoughts and counsel. Going back to the mayor, his comments and question on the changes over the last couple of weeks, and you had mentioned that a judge has retired and has been, and there's been a new one appointed. So what bearing, so does that have on the case or the hearing that we have in front of us on the administrative review? And how do you factor that into, you know, the outlook if we don't enter into this settlement?
I probably would reserve any detailed comments about the impact of the judge changing. I would say that, without any hesitation, that it creates more uncertainty, no matter what, no matter when, if a judge changes, there's going to be more uncertainty in the case.
Okay. And let's just say that we decide not to pursue the settlement, and we win in court on the administrative review, and so what happens with the contract and the PSA that we're involved in with the developer?
I think a conversation about the specifics of the PSA and what would happen at the end of the litigation is something I would recommend to hold in executive session.
Okay.
But the PSA is still in effect.
Thank you.
Alderman Nowitz.
The settlement agreement requires that all these decisions be made by December 5th.
It does not require that they have to be made by December 5th, Alderman Nowitz. Just that that's the amount of time that the litigation will be stayed.
So if, if the Plan Commission sends it back for another meeting, or the HPC sends it back, or we don't act on it on December 5th, then the whole settlement falls apart and we pick up litigation where we left off?
So the litigation will pick back up. We still will proceed through the process to consider that revised plan, but the obligations to pause the process will be lifted and the stay would have to be lifted and the lawsuit would continue a piece.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Actually, to pick up on that, do you have any kind of a sense of, you know, assuming everything continued, how long it would be before, let's say we don't enter into the settlement, and the administrative review case comes to some sort of conclusion? Do you have any, any sense of when that, that's likely to be?
The administrative review portion, certainly not. If this was not approved, I think early next year at the best, because we do have a new judge, so we, I don't know if that briefing schedule would stay. Probably if the revised plans are not approved, again, it would probably be looking into March or April of next year, maybe February if we got a hearing date right away.
Just because of the stay?
Yeah, it would be a stay. And then there's obviously still a breach of contract claim that although it's been dismissed, it is still the subject of a motion of reconsider that is also being paused as part of this stay.
Thank you. Alderman Rummel.
Well, first of all, I want to thank my fellow aldermen for their thoughtful clarifying questions and comments. I think it's very helpful for all of us. And one thing that I hadn't focused on was that what we call the Donovan property is not, is it still going to be subject to the same timeline in terms of getting approved? Or is that going to be a totally separate matter that can be extended for however long it might take?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sorry, Alderman Rummel, the Donovan, this, the 373 property that we're referring, that's not part of the settlement agreement, so that would have to go through the normal development approval process.
And maybe just to follow up on that question, I take it there is no application at this point in time for developing the 373 property?
That is correct. There is no application currently filed for that property.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Alderman Weber.
Good thing for the microphone. When I reviewed everything and, you know, hearing my fellow aldermen, hearing your comments and hearing from staff and from Kurt, the first thing that comes to mind is when we look at settlement as a compromise, in that we're working to come forth with a better solution as best we can for everyone involved. And so for me personally, when I look at this and look at this plan, I think there's a lot of things it does well, and I'm encouraged by that, and I'm encouraged by the discussions that's been had on both parties. It's not a win-win situation. There's a lot of things that are given up to come to this, and it doesn't always feel very good. But in general, my sense is that there are some great things for that particular neighborhood and for the city as a whole.
Thank you. Other comments from the council? All right. In that case, we will then move on to public comment. I have four cards here from people who would like to speak. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And if somebody before you has made an argument that you would like to make, it would really be helpful if you would just say, "I agree with the person before me on this issue." First up is Susan Athinson.
Sorry, let me just get, make sure I have the right page here. Oh, excuse me, I feel if my statement makes better. Okay, good evening, Mayor Pandy Leal and city council members. I am Susan Athinson. I am president of the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation. We sent you an opinion earlier today, and so tonight I was just going to read a portion of that statement. "As the city council is well aware, the last iteration of Phase Three of the McKinley Road Development Project generated vehement and widespread public opposition for one simple reason: Those responsible substantially deviated from the 2016 master redevelopment plan for Phase Three, thereby ignoring the consensus of the community on which the project was based. As envisioned in that plan, there would be a single-family home or duplex on the lot facing Westminster with a multifamily building behind it, which would extend no further north than Phase One building. This configuration achieved two objectives important to the community. First, it would preserve the historic residential streetscape of Westminster, one of the main entrances to the East Lake Forest Historic District. Second, by setting the Phase Three building back from the single-family home or duplex, it would avoid the mistake that occurred with respect to 351 East Westminster, where the historic house was saved, but the condominium was built almost on top of it, overpowering the smaller residence. Following the developer's purchase of an adjoining property, 361 East Westminster, Phase Three changed dramatically. Instead of a single-family home fronting Westminster, a much larger condominium building was proposed that mimicked the Phase One and Phase Two buildings and would stretch all the way to Westminster. Not surprisingly, such a structure failed to meet the 17 standards applied by the HPC, and a certificate of appropriateness was denied by a six-to-one vote. The petitioner appealed to this council, which upheld the decision of the HPC. At the time, the foundation submitted a memorandum to the city council in support of the HPC's decision and offered an alternative. We suggested that the petitioners should consider putting a single-family home on the front lot and the condominium building behind, consistent with a 2016 master plan. Instead, the petitioner filed suit against the city and all those who publicly voiced their views at the meeting. More than one year later, having failed to prevail on any claims, 361 Westminster LLC is back before the city council, seeking to resolve the lawsuit by proposing to put a single-family home on the lot facing Westminster with Building Three behind it. While this is a positive development, the foundation has concerns with the settlement agreement because the newly proposed Building Three still materially deviates from the 2016 master plan in two ways. First, the footprint for Building Three is now much larger than originally proposed by approximately 4,800 square feet. Second, the increase in square footages is all up front, directly behind the proposed single-family home, with the proposed Building Three being constructed approximately 60 feet further north than Building One. As a result, there is a real danger that it will encroach and overpower the proposed single-family home and undermine the historic integrity of the surrounding area. While the proposal leaves out key details such as height, design, roof shapes, or roof living space, among other things, the footprint suggests that it will remain the same monolithic structure that simply does not comply with the HPC's standards. In conclusion, the foundation suggests that the settlement agreement be modified so that the proposed site plan be made consistent with the 2016 master plan, the guiding development document, and the site plan that was part of the original PSA. The 2016 master plan was agreed to by all parties and allows for sensitive development in a historic neighborhood. The foundation also questions why the conveyance of the library spaces was removed. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up, Jeff Terosian.
Evening, council. Jeff Terosian, 401 East Westminster. When we first heard about rumors in town that were, I guess, coming from Todd Altonian, that there was a settlement, we were actually pleased. I was a little surprised, considering there are literally six law firms on our side of the V in the litigation, that Kurt didn't reach out to anyone to think, to hear what we thought about the plan that was going to get submitted. And the first we heard about was through rumors, but we were pleased that the settlement would finally put this to rest. Unfortunately, this deal doesn't really do it for the city. It's a terrible deal for the city. First of all, you're going to win the litigation. It's a no-brainer. You're going to win the litigation. I understand the PSA is still in place at the end of that, but what you're doing in this deal is you are taking less money for this property, half. You are giving another $250,000 credit for something you don't need to pay for, which means you are giving a half acre of city property away for free in order to resolve a lawsuit that you're going to win. And to do that, you are agreeing, although you're saying in some parts that you're not suggesting you agree to this plan, but in other parts, you're saying you like this plan. So I think at the very least, city council has to be clear, you are not endorsing in any way this plan, because if you do, you're taking the duties away from HPC. If you endorse the lot lines and the setbacks that are written in the settlement plan, if you say that they're a good plan, like you just did, Mayor, if you say they look pretty good, like you did, Alderman Weber, that's taking the duties away from the HPC, and that's not fair. That's not providing them with the opportunity. That's not providing them with the opportunity to do their work. If I can just submit two passouts, and if I can approach.
Maybe take them over to the table. We're going to keep this to three minutes, right?
Yeah, I am. I just have, I just want you to see this.
One of each?
Yes, correct.
Should have these separated. I'm giving them as a packet.
Pass them on.
Please wrap up your comments.
I will, please. Now that you have them in front of you, you're looking at two things. They're both a picture of the plan, the settlement plan that the developer is going to propose. On one of them, we've drawn in the building from the 2016 master plan. The community did not object to that plan. We did not object to that plan. That was a good plan. It provided a $500,000 payment to the city for a condo building and a single-family house. And this plan is way bigger in a condo building than the original 2016 plan. This community has never fought against that plan. This community is in favor of that plan. But this developer is incapable of providing a plan that comports with the 2016 master plan. And by settling this lawsuit, you are allowing the developer to try yet again the same plan that he just got rejected in 2021 because you're nervous there's a new judge. A new judge is a fantastic judge. The new judge is going to make the right decision and uphold the HPC. There's no risk there. And what you're doing is allowing this developer to go back and redo their 2021 plan, albeit with a single-family house in front, but the condo building is just pushed back. It's a lot bigger than the 2016 master plan, and we'd ask that you stay the course, reject this settlement plan, and let the court make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rami Lopet. So far, we're batting zero on keeping this to three minutes, so please respect the timeline.
I'll try my best. My name is Rami Lopet. Good evening. Thank you. This project review process so confounded me two years ago that I took time to read through every set of city council, plan commission, and library meeting minutes back to 2011, just to understand how we got in, for lack of a better word, such a mess. A mess that didn't treat either the developer, or the neighborhood, or the public fairly. And it eventually resulted in the developer suing the city and many people who testified for or against this 361 Westminster condominium project. Seems everybody involved has an axe to grind about how this process unfolded. So let's look back quickly. On January 7, 2017, the city council approved, with not one question asked, a term sheet to swap land with the developer so that the library could get extra parking. The minutes read, also read, the overall development would also provide for common open space in the area north of the library, pedestrian pathways, and landscaped streetscapes. On May 7, 2017, a few months later, you approved a purchase agreement based on a fair market value assessment. Again, no questions asked, including why this property sale was not bid out or even So, no questions asked or no few conditions of stipulation is precisely what I don't want to have happen tonight. In fact, there's a lot of questions that deserve to be asked and answered clearly, and primarily among them being why taxpayers are being asked not to get the original $500,000 for one-half acre of land, which we own, but only $250,000, even though market conditions have improved markedly since 2016. Many residents do not understand how this property sale started and where it's headed now, especially given how well we seem to be faring in court. Late this afternoon, I sent you written testimony after reading this proposed settlement for the first time just this morning. Please do not approve this settlement, especially without asking more questions or going through all the points I raised. There are so many i's to be dotted and t's to be crossed in this document. Here's a few, here's six points out of many others. One, the dates for commission reviews should be flexible to allow for multiple meetings and keeping the hearing record open. Two, plans and diagrams should be kept out of this settlement. Their inclusion gives the impression of tacit approval of the physical plan by the city council. Remember that, and this was brought up by Ms. Atherton, the plan commission stated in 2017 that careful attention, this is a quote, "should be given to providing for appropriate transitions to and buffering of the properties around," including increasing the setbacks, beyond minimum setbacks. And it goes on to be, to say, "A plan should be developed to allow the library to continue to use a portion of the Westminster site for overflow parking even during construction." Those conditions seem to have been dropped along the way, but they're deserving of being adhered to. And the commissions should achieve these goals at long last. Another important and vital point in this settlement, which I hope you'll answer, is, and I think we have heard that answer, "Did the library's needs get dropped wholesale by deleting Part III, Section 4G, Improvement and Conveyance of the Parking Area?" That title was not even put in this agreement. We didn't know until I went back to the purchase agreement, which was included in the lawsuit, in the developer's lawsuit. I had to go there to see the purchase agreement. You can't see that that library got dropped. The library gets no parking, at a minimum. It should get parking, fencing, landscaping, asphalting. It should get green space.
Please, please wrap up your comments.
I shall. Thank you. This settlement does not work for the city as a whole. I hope you will send the lawyers back to the drawing board and include the neighbors, the library, the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation, even the HOAs at the negotiating cable. And most of all, I hope you'll direct the staff to perform a detailed post-mortem on this project so that we can be assured of transparency, fairness, and maximum citizen and neighborhood inclusion in all future development projects. Thank you so much for your attention.
Todd Curry?
I will keep this to three minutes. I'm Todd Curry. I live at 360 East Westminster, directly across from the 361 lot in a 150-year-old historic home. I am very happy to see the city's leadership on this, and I believe that there is a lot of good here. I think, as a matter of process, we, as a set of neighbors, could have been consulted in a way that didn't expose the city to risk. But I hope that this forum tonight can serve as a bit of a moment where we can offer a few suggestions that I think could, you know, represent reasonable points to make this plan even better. Two of them are community impact, four are conditional on something Kurt said that I'll come back to in a moment. So the two, the most important point that I would leave for the city to weigh and consider is that if the condo building is allowed to be built first, it is reasonable to anticipate that there can be an opportunity for the builder to come back and ask to build a condo building facing Westminster, on the, on the street. And I think that's a situation that we all want to avoid, we've actively tried to avoid. The drawings that are submitted indeed actively avoid that. So it seems reasonable to me to simply ask, the first property removed from Westminster was the one at 361, can we simply ask for the single-family home at 361 to be the first one built? It then, I think, eliminates a lot of points of potential contention down the road. The second is, after enduring four years of building over the past five years, I would ask simply that we consider a mercy rule, that there to be no Sunday work of any kind on the lot after years and years of beep, beep, seven days a week. The other four points that I'll make are really based on sort of whether the city is, through this settlement agreement, binding the HPC in plan. If they are not, then these may be moot. But if they are, I would argue that the city has to give direction as to the standards that will be applied on this property, that residential standards, because it's in the historic district, because it is sitting in close proximity to residential properties, that residential standards must be upheld, used in its construction, that the square footage and height be specified, if indeed this is going to be binding, and that there be absolutely no rooftop decks of any kind. This is not Highwood. This is not Wrigleyville. This is the historic district of Lake Forest, and they are not appropriate in this part of Lake Forest. The last is, I would, you know, argue to the extent that it can be avoided, that we bypass, that we, you know, do not bypass plan and HPC. Again, much progress made. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Art Miller.
Hello, I'm Art Miller, 1100 Pembroke Drive, apartment 43. I follow this routinely as it's gone, developed along. And I guess I'm trying to figure out what's changed, what's making people so happy about this arrangement. There were eight units arranged for originally. They will have seven, six or seven, or certainly places in their new condominium building, plus they will have a single-family home. A driveway will go so close to that second family, second single-family home that it's going to seem very urban, certainly there. It's very closely close to that. So I'm, I'm curious, then, all these other concessions have been made to satisfy them, but they're going to be selling the same amount of material. I don't know about square feet, but whether it's six or seven units, there's almost no slippage for them. A single-family home would sell well, if it was done right. And so I guess I'm confused about how there are so many things that are great. The good thing is that there is a house on Westminster that should have been from the start, and now it is in there. But it seems like so many concessions are being made that it makes one wonder. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sally Downey.
I'm Sally Downey, 475 East Westminster. It's deja vu all over again. Same players, same council room, same lack of communication of the neighborhood. And as a plan that at first glance looks very close to the 2016 master plan that called for condo on the South Parcel and a single-family home or duplex fronting Westminster, only this condo's footprint is bigger due to redrawn lot lines. The absurdity should not be lost on any of us. Tonight, those most directly impacted get three minutes each to speak while the developer has been afforded months of discussions with the city to hatch his newest plan. Here's what I have to say. Despite being labeled anti-development, the Westminster neighbors have always understood there would be something on the city lot. The city made it quite clear that it had to be beneficial to the city financially, so preserving green space was never an option. We can all argue about what is right to do, what the right thing to do is with a half-an-acre in the historic district. But you have drawn your top line, and so we would like to be crystal clear about ours. One, voting for this recommended settlement tonight as it is currently proposed will tie the hands of your committees. The developer's drawings show setbacks, new property lines drawn, which is the job of the plan commission, and detailed designs of the house, which are not the purview of the historic, which are the purview of the historic district, historic preservation committee, commission. Do not, I repeat, do not do what you've done in the past years and either overrule or bypass the plan commission or hamstring the HPC. All you need to do is watch how we got into this mess in the first place. Watch former HPC chairman Bruce Greve in his last meeting before he resigned, basically tell his commissioners that they may not like the dealer design, but the city tied their hands. We ask you remove the drawings so that developer and his lawyer don't mistake your vote as consent to build as currently specified. Can we please try putting process before the petitioner? Number two, the settlement contract you are currently proposing should not have designed, scale, or lot lines called out. But you city council should specify that the condo and the house will be built with a residential scale and according to the 17 standards that have guided our beautiful city for years. Basic guardrails are imperative before it goes through the commissions. The neighbors are rightfully concerned and suspicious as to why the Westminster-facing house design has so much detail, but there is almost none on the condo. This settlement should have language about guaranteeing that a house must be designed and built fronting Westminster. There's currently nothing that prevents the developer from building their bread-and-butter condo and then walking away. Number three, the council should also have in the settlement that no staging will be done on either of its newly garnered city property nor his adjacent land formerly known as the Donovan property. They, like every other builder in Lake Forest, can find alternative places to put their equipment. We have lived with their construction, their mess, for years. Please treat them like you do other builders. This is not a lot to ask for. Had you invited us to the table earlier, years earlier, we could have avoided all this. Yes, we still have issues with the developer utilizing the extra 38 feet from the Donovan property that the city council approved after the plan, after plan rejected it. And yes, we will have zero tolerance for the developers trying to sneak another rooftop on the neighborhood, but we have chosen to take it to the commission. My final thoughts are this. Under purpose and action requested in the settlement agreement, you have written, quote, "Efforts towards settlement of this litigation are being pursued to avoid further expense and uncertainties, and ideally to allow parties and the community as a whole to move forward in a productive and positive direction." While all parties weren't included in the discussion of a lawsuit, the city was actually winning. Hence the reason Mr. Altonian kept appealing. The other parties in their council were aware of the settlement talks, and the neighbors are never alerted to anything. But luckily, we have a developer who likes to talk, and city service people, and people affiliated at the library who've let us know since early summer that this condo was going to happen because the mayor wanted it. We were given a date of March 2023 for groundbreaking. We thought they had to be rumors when the city was successfully fighting the suit.
Wrap up your comments.
I have two more paragraphs, and I'll bring up somebody to give me three more minutes. We thought they had to be rumors when the city was successfully fighting the suit, but all of us knew that past years, where there's smoke, there's fire. My last comment is regard to the lack of support you have given to the neighbors and those who are named in lawsuits. You may be out of money, but collectively, the neighbors and others have spent tens of thousands of dollars trying to protect our neighborhood that should have been protected by the 17 standards. Lawyers, drones, historic experts were hired because we have chosen to live in this historic area and abide by the standards that these developers and you, the city council, have chosen to ignore. And where was your support of your fellow alderman? You chose to never address the media or Mr. Ford, who publicly told several aldermen to resign after calling their ethics into question. All you had to say was, "We support our volunteer council members." No lawsuit forced you to stay silent, and so you allowed for reputations to be publicly vilified. Please do the right thing tonight. Do not accept this settlement without modifications. Remove the drawings and details and say there will be a single-family home fronting Westminster. The condominium will be residential in scale and follow the 17 standards, and there will be no stangy of either project in Westminster. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Reed Daly.
Can I present?
No.
Is there anything?
No, we don't do that. You can, you're willing to speak, you're, you're allowed to speak. We don't have.
Can I talk to it?
We generally don't do presentations, demonstrations, and so forth. You're perfectly willing to, you're perfectly.
Can you guys see my computer? You can?
I can see the headline.
Can you see it?
Yeah, but you need to speak into the microphone.
Okay. Can you guys see if I speak over here?
I can't see it.
Please, please make your comments.
Does anyone have a USB cord that I can hook to their presentation?
Your time is running.
Yep.
Sir, you're out of order. We specifically asked you not to do this, and you're ignoring us?
I'm not, you, you asked me to do three minutes, I'm just.
I would recommend that you start speaking.
Okay, so I can show you guys this way. So I'm at 385. I'm the property adjacent to the, or behind the Donovan house, adjacent to the proposed presentation or new property. So four topics I want to talk about. Size step up, impact on local residents, Christmas in July, is what I'll call it, NASCAR pileup, tasks, revenue, and garage. So what you can see here is the master plan with the original presentation, and I'll show you colors so you can see how the sizing is. You can see that there was a step up in size in the 2021 rejected plan, and then, once again, I've put them side to side. Now, I know it's hard with the, the distance here, so what I've done is I've color coordinated it. So you can see just the step up of the 2016, 2021, and 2022. So significant step up and then removing sort of the backscapes, just to see the size. So unfortunately, as a resident in a historic area with trees, this is what I bought in 2016. It was beautiful, a lot of trees. We talked about all the trees. Unfortunately, this is what my property looks like now. Damage, weather, water runoff, nothing there, construction, trash. It's a shame. This is what I see right now, and that's building number two, so that is significantly further away. This is what I will see from my place. So I'm going to see 35-plus windows, 25 additional exterior lights, that's just based on my estimates, 10-plus big screens, and 10-plus air conditions. So that's why I call it Christmas in July. And then the next thing I've got is my residence here at 351, a pileup. I've got 20-plus additional cars coming out of the condo, two additional cars coming out of the home. From a tax revenue standpoint, we've got millionaires and billionaires that purchased the original units, consider transitioning back to smaller units to have more people living here full-time where those dollars aren't flying down to Florida or Arizona. Also, I will say, if it does get approved, I will just tell you guys, you'll see me again. I would like to propose a two-story garage with a roof to mimic the properties that exist there, to block out any lights against the 36 windows that are proposed. Thank you for my time. I'm under my three minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. That concludes public comment. I would bring it back to the council now for final thoughts. I would like to reiterate one very critical thing that I mentioned at the beginning of my comments. The objective here is to take the 2021 plan off the table. To the extent that we go forward in litigation, that is the plan that is going to be decided on, and anybody who handicaps and tells us that they know how this is going to go is, I think, dreaming. So anyway, having said that, I would bring it back to the council for comments. Alderman Bushman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the citizens for participating and providing input. I did have some prepared comments, and to some extent, it overlaps with things that were said. First is what we all can agree upon. We all can agree upon that none of us are happy with the way this progressed, how it, how it is ending up now, the challenges, the difficulties, the axis to grind, as someone said. It was not good, and I do hope that we do take the opportunity at the appropriate time to review the process and ask ourselves the questions, how can it be improved? Because I think improvements are necessary and should be done. The next point I think we can all agree upon is, you know, a settlement where the parties come to a meeting of the minds is better than litigation. I've practiced law for over 30 years, 25 years. I've spent as council to a Fortune 500 company, handled, managed hundreds of cases in litigation, and settlement is a nice way to go rather than throw the dice and leave it to the judge. And I do recognize your last comment, Mr. Mayor, that there cannot be any guarantees. But despite that, you know, we all have our individual feelings and understandings. I've been very close to this whole process. I've looked at it from a legal perspective and have my own thoughts on that. It's not appropriate to get into those now, but I do recognize that if we can come to a meeting of the minds that's fair, so much the better. The other comment I have that I think we really do need to confirm, that the council now, and this is for the folks here to understand, the council now is not being asked to review the merits or evaluate the plan, and any comments that, you know, any of us made, you know, should be disregarded, in my opinion. What we are trying to do is let the matter go back to the Plan Commission and the HPC, and that goes to an earlier point I raised, is are they being encumbered somehow? Are they being directed to do something somehow? And to me, I hope we all agree, the answer is no. They know what the standards are, they know how to apply them, and they should be free and independent to review the matters and to cover some of the things that you can raise with them when it comes before the Plan Commission and the HPC. Obviously, and I do hope the developer is listening, I hope the developer goes into these with an open mind and see if we can come up with something that goes a long way towards meeting the objectives of everyone. I do recognize that we do have a situation where we've gone through a process. We did have the council overrule the Plan Commission, but that ordinance that we adopted clearly says it's of no force and effect until the property transfers, and we don't have a transfer property. So it is somewhat a clean slate. I'm looking to the Plan Commission and the HPC to review the new plan that the developers want to come forward with. And I, I do look very positively on the fact that we do have a new plan, a new opportunity for seeing what makes sense. What before the, is before the council is these terms and conditions in the settlement plan where somehow we seem to be giving up a lot from the city's perspective, and by a lot, I'm talking about the taxpayer dollars. That's our, you know, fiduciary responsibility to know what we're spending money on. I've always felt the $500,000 purchase price initially was below market price, was not even, was a good price for the developer, so be it, that was agreed to. But now to say it's got to go down another $250,000, whether it's because he's incurred these legal costs, which was at his initiative, or the fact he's got to now redesign so he's not going to make as much money as he wanted to make in the first place, I can't have much sympathy with that argument, I'm sorry. And the fact that we need to do a further contribution of $250,000 for bearing, although there is a benefit, I think, to the neighbors, to the community, to have the utilities buried, so there is some benefit there, similarly to the contribution for affordable housing. But that gives him the right to price his units at market rather than under affordable housing limitations, so he's making money that way. And that's where I struggle, not with the concept, not with the idea that we should take this thing to the Plan Commission, to the HPC, but I don't think the city got a fair deal in terms of the contributions and the amount of monies that we're putting into this thing.
Other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. So Ray, you started out great. I was really kind of with you there in the beginning. I agree with all your comments on process and non-binding. I mean, the fact is, you know, this is a chance, a chance for a better plan and a settlement to go through our community development process. It's a chance, and, you know, I think as an alderman, we're here to try to facilitate chances for better things to happen and better outcomes. And I think we can all sympathize with how we got here, but our job is to figure out what's the best decision, you know, factoring in the incremental costs and benefits to our community, kind of moving forward. And it's a much better plan because it addresses the streetscape issues, and Art Miller had mentioned that, and other people in the comments had talked about that, and there was a big concern with the transitions into the historic district. And so the two, the two single-family homes that the HPC and the Plan Commission are going to talk about makes sense to me intuitively. As an alderman, I'd like that chance to try to happen, and if we don't enter into this settlement, I don't like our chances in the administrative hearing, and I think there is a very large chance that that 21 building comes back into force, which nobody wants. So I really take a pragmatic view on this. If we win, the PSA is still binding, and we're back to kind of square one with the developer. We can't walk. And again, it's a chance, it's a better plan to get through a process, it's non-binding to the Plan Commission or to the HPC. I was on the HPC for six years, I was the chair. There are always people that are thoughtful on that, they have the design standards, Kathy does a great job facilitating the conversation. So I'm, I'm in support of facilitating the chance for it to happen. And so I agree with the mayor's comments, I thank our city council for their support, even though it's been a tough process. I really do admire and thank the aldermen that are in support of this chance, that have been named in the lawsuits and, and other things. It's, 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 it's not easy, but this is a chance to do the right thing to get the process going for a plan that's incrementally better, and I'm, I'm in support of entering the settlement.
Alderman Morris.
Thanks. I just want to follow up on Alderman Weber and your comments about the amount of effort that's gone into this and the fact that it's a give and take. You know, it's, I have a lot of neighbors here, they all have different opinions about what should or shouldn't be in the agreement. That's interesting, but as a city council, we have to do what's in the best interest of the city as a whole. So this effort and the give and take that's gone on between the developer and the council and our legal council has been trying and challenging, but I think in Alderman Bushman, your comments about the HPC and the Planning Commission and letting that process work is going to make this come out the right way. So I'm in favor of it.
Other comments? Alderman Rommel.
Alderman Bushman, once again, I think that you, your comments were right on point tonight. I'm not so concerned about all the financial aspects of this because I do believe that we'll make up much of that in tax revenue. What's most important to me are the design aspects of this and that we're not going to have a behemoth of a building adjacent to an historic area, and I think the integrity of that and maintaining that is very important. I also think that maintaining the integrity and the authority of our commissions is very important, and for that reason, I'm very glad that this is going back to the Plan Commission and back to the HPC. I think that's a very important step. I cannot speak to what transpired in the direct negotiations, but I do believe that between our city attorney and the mayor and our city manager, who were part of those negotiations, that this was a tough negotiation, and that what is before us tonight is the fairest resolution that was possible, and that beyond that, we are rolling the dice as you do whenever you're involved in litigation. I too am an attorney, we've all seen things turn in directions that we didn't anticipate. Not only that, but there are always, not, just going through the trial court process, there are still appeals that are possible and even likely in this litigation. So, but I also think it's very valuable, everyone who spoke tonight from the public, I, I thought your comments were also extremely valuable, and I would ask that you submit them so that we can have copies of your comments. Many of you were reading comments. Mr. Daly, I'd like to see what you had on your computer, and I hope you will submit those to both the Plan Commission and the HPC, which are the appropriate bodies to really consider a lot of your comments, which had to do with design. And ultimately, I am totally on board with learning lessons from what we've been through, and that means reviewing the processes that got us here. And some of that may go very deep, and I hope we take the time to reflect on all of that and possibly make some changes. I hope there is that opportunity. And thank you for all of you who've been involved in this process from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
The beauty of going almost at the end. Everyone has been so eloquent and so articulate. I agree with just about everything that was said from the council tonight. Thank you very much for clarifying the positions so I could just piggyback on. I applaud the members of the public who spoke. Every point was very well made and definitely worth consideration. The reason that I can support this settlement agreement, frankly, is because I know that the HPC and the Plan Commission are both going to weigh in on this, and the fact that nobody's hands are tied with a December 5 deadline gives me much comfort because, so we're hitting a pause button, essentially, until December 5. And if Plan and HPC have objections and require additional meetings, then they'll have them. It will not make this settlement agreement happen, it's just giving us a pause button on the litigation, which I think is just sensible. If we can work this out, let's try to work it out. It doesn't mean that anybody's rolling over to their plan. If the HPC rejects it and Plan Commission rejects it, then they have to fix it, or we will figure it out. I, there's just, I'm comforted by that greatly. So that's where I am.
Thank you. Alderman Weber.
Just one quick thing. I just want to make a public comment that I'm so grateful to stand here and be elected by the public who are comfortable to come up and state your positions and share and be a part of this process, and also the leadership of this council, who spent countless hours with staff and, and our attorney to work through this. This has not been easy. I said, "It's not happy, it doesn't feel good." And I'm proud of our city and how we've worked through this, and I applaud everyone that sits here, and I applaud the residents and homeowners for continuing to stay engaged.
Thank you. I'd like to move the question, please. Do I have a second?
I moved it, I made the motion.
Second by Alderman Morris. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Novick.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Nay.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Six yays, one nay, motion carries.
Thank you. And I'd just like to sum up, I think Alderman Novick's comments at the end are, are critical. This is just hitting the pause button while we try to get a better deal for the neighborhood, and taking the risk of the rejected plan off the table, at least for a couple of months, while we try to come up with a better plan. The thing that is, looms, looms large here is the 21 plan that was rejected is what is before the court. It will be up or down. We will get that plan, or we will go into continuing fighting. That's not a good, that's, that, we're trying to keep our eye on the big ball here and, and try to, try and get as much of what everybody in this room has been arguing for, for the last two or three years, as much as we can. And it's, it's a And it's, it's a compromise, as Alderman Weber said. You know that it's a fair compromise when nobody's happy. And I would say that's, that's sort of where we are. So thank you all. This has been, has been a difficult process. It's not over. And stay engaged. I know it may not feel that way, but we have listened hard and we have heard you and that's why this is happening. We're trying. And we're trying to avoid a calamitous outcome. So, so I just will end with that. And thank you, thank you to the council for, for your, for your judgment and consideration and hard work.
And please don't leave without giving us your comments in, in writing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I really would be interested in.
I'd love to see the, I mean, we've got some of them already.
Right, but not all of them.
Not all of them.
Mayor, to that point, it would be really helpful because I do feel bad that we were not able to see that presentation on your laptop. It would be tremendously helpful for us if that were submitted in advance because I have, I have a sense that that's an integral part of the discussion and, and I want to respect that. But to the mayor's point, there's a process in all of this and that includes a public commentary. And I, I feel somewhat shortchanged because I have a feeling that there was good information in that. So please, if you can, with your comments or any information, submit them in advance. I can assure you that everybody does read those.
Well said. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of an amendment to contract with Architect and Engineering Services for the Deer Path turf fields that you're getting with the department. The contract signed moved to include additional design services and the $55,200. Chuck Meyer, Superintendent of Parks and Forests, will be the next one.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. On September 6th, we met to last talk about this and city council provided some important direction for us for the continued design of the sports, or the Deer Path turf project. The main thing we were looking at is the size of the field. As you recall, the 9.5 acres was agreed to, agreed to the design criteria for going forward with much of the materials that will be selected. And then finally, it was support for the conceptual plan that was shown as well. So with that, we did also review the costs for, the estimated cost at that time. And you will recall, we were at about 30% design. These costs were based on that. This, this you saw before. But just to remind you that those estimates, estimates did include the turf products, as I mentioned, with that evaluation criteria, the elevated fields to keep it out of the floodway, walking path around the entire park, the site lighting, the dugouts and other amenities related to that, bleachers and so forth, the sports and maintenance equipment and the utilities for three buildings. And then the west side, the natural areas and the detention improvement. So that's what was included in that. As you recall, we talked about everything within that yellow area. What it did not include was the actual building structures. And there were a few structures that are talked about, one in the north end, that would be a bathroom with shelter and concessions and then a smaller restroom facility on the south end. And then we also talked about a building or a structure for maintenance as well. So with that, I also pointed out that it did not include improvements north of the field. Those are the things that were outlined in the conceptual vision plan. And it, it did not include other amenities such as playgrounds and fitness stations, things like that. And then finally, it did not include the boardwalk that was shown, that would access some of those natural areas. And this was all mentioned so that we could also talk to you about providing you with a menu later in the project. Once we're at the 100% design stage, we would provide you with the base price, which would be updated as design is updated. And then we would provide you with a menu, so to speak, of additional things to consider. So with that, we are now at 70% design. So design has been continuing to move on nicely. Things are going well with that, but we're at a, a point now where we need to have additional design services completed. So just to remind you also, the original contract with Hitchcock Design Group included the turf field and two buildings. And that again is that north and south buildings. And at, so as we met with you last time, we talked about different buildings. Two of them were covered under design, but the maintenance shop was not. So this additional, these additional services are, they involve the design of some of the concepts that were developed at that time. As you recall, we had sought the opinions and the thoughts from the advisory group at that time. These were things that they had supported and wanted to go forward with. And so these are things that were brought up on the conceptual plan. They will also, as I mentioned, they will allow us to provide you with a cost estimate at a later date. So it's important that we get the design going on a couple of these things so that we can provide you with that menu in a meeting in the future. So as I mentioned, it's the maintenance shop. And just to remind you, this is the far west side, the Skokie River on the west. This is just a conceptual plan. This is not a design or anything, but the maintenance shop was best suited for that area. It doesn't impact the fields at all. So we thought that was the best place to put it. We have had some preliminary discussions with an architect on the team and the whole design team about this. So the first part is the maintenance building and a parking lot, just to make sure you're clear that. The parking lot that we're talking about here is just the parking lot for the maintenance shop. It's not going to be much more than two spots and a little bit of storage area for some outdoor storage for things like nets and goals, things like that. So that's the, the parking lot we're talking about. And then the boardwalk is down here on the, in the southwest corner. You will see there's other paths that go into the natural area. Those were part of the design plan from the original contract. However, the idea of a boardwalk, again, something that was expressed by the advisory group is something they were excited about outside of just the turf project. That is, is for recreational purposes. It's not necessary that we have that, but it does give an extra view of the wetlands and, in that area. So that, those are the two things that we're bringing before you for design considerations. And just so, just to remind you, we did have, our original contract was 388,800 with Hitchcock. We did have a 10% contingency on there. That has been spent already on other added aspects of the project. So tonight, we're asking for the additional 85,000 to cover the cost of this new design work. So again, maintenance shop with parking lot attached to it and the boardwalk. So with that, I'd also mention too, just so you know a little bit more about the maintenance shop, we are designing that with sensitivity to cost. It may not look like the rest of the buildings. The other buildings are going to be in very much in public view. We are looking at this as a maintenance shop and as such, it doesn't have to have the same aesthetic. We have also directed that we would want to use landscaping for screening on that, just to add a little clarity. That's as far as we are with the design on this. We, we are waiting tonight to get approval so that we can move forward with that. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Alderman Weber?
Thank you so much. Couple of questions. The maintenance shop, is that going to be used for equipment to maintain the turf field? Can you just comment on what's actually going in there? And when you talk about screening from the field, will then, your equipment then have to go up and around? I'm just looking at this conceptual plan. How is that going to be easily accessible to the field if that's, that's question one?
Yeah. So the, it will make it, it will make it accessible for sure, but we are talking about landscaping it in a way that obviously they, they need to get out. So even, we want to make sure that we're screening it from the west side so that the neighbors over there aren't having that, you know, it'll look nice. We'll keep it looking nice, but it is something we want to be aware of. And I'm sorry, the, your first question was how it was going to be used. It is, it is for maintenance of the site. So it's not meant to be anything that complicated. It's basically space that they can put the equipment. There are pieces that will be required to maintain this on a regular basis, so rakes and things like that.
So it's basically a large shed?
Yes.
Or a garage?
Pretty much. I would call it a, a garage. We will store supplies in there also, things like the infill, things like that would need a dry place to be kept.
And then just touching on the boardwalk design, in concept, I think it's great. Is this going to be, I'm assuming then ADA compliant? Are you thinking it's going to be like a board or will it be gravel? I mean, I just kind of dive in a little bit more what the committee or advisory group had spoken about.
The trails are, it's a material that's similar to Forest Park. Now, this hasn't been selected yet, but that's what we envision. The trails would be, and that was included, that's not what we're talking about tonight. So screenings, like the Forest Preserves, Forest Park, think of that for the paths. The boardwalks would be a construct, constructed structure. So part of this does include structural engineering for it, but basically, we would envision a wooden or composite. It hasn't been designed, obviously, but we would work through that. So you would step onto that to be an elevated platform. It's not high up. It's just higher than the trail elevation. Similar to what you see at, you might compare it to even at Forest Park, the one that goes through the woods, something along those lines.
Okay. And I'm.
It's wet.
Right.
This spot, this is the wettest spot of the park.
I'm confident too that staff has perhaps squeezed Hitchcock a bit, you know, in terms of working on this project, you know, and trying to be fiscally responsible with the design end, you know, these can just, projects can kind of go on and on and on. Designers are, I mean, I'm a floral designer, so I know.
We, we have, I, I do feel that Hitchcock has been very fair to us.
Great.
We have been working closely with them. They've done a lot to help through the design, but this, particularly the building, was not within the scope. So I, I think they're being very considerate of us and fair to us.
I just had to ask a question for tax dollar purposes. But thank you very much.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Chuck, thanks very much. Two questions. This design funding, the city has become very, very adept in the last several years at securing funding for grant money. And I guess maybe this would go to you and/or Director Swarthout. Will these design elements be sufficient as to, a lot of these elements are, we're kind of going on an à la carte menu? If indeed, we fund portions of this project, but not all of it, and that boardwalk in particular, I think is a wonderful idea. And thanks to the advisory committee that City Manager Wisher put together. Will this be sufficient to take those design elements and then seek funding from various state or federal agencies, hopefully, really in a, in a partnership with the city of Lake Forest? Will it be sufficient to hopefully carry us through a, a grant process? Will it meet that rigor? And then a second question.
Yeah, absolutely. We are, the boardwalk in particular, I don't know if I mentioned before to you, Alderman Weber, but it is going to absolutely be ADA compliant. That was something you had mentioned. And this will take us through full design. So it will be a project that is ready for a grant. And as you mentioned, this one does have some good possibility, I think, to seek grant funding. It, there's a lot of possibilities, especially in natural areas like that. I think it does fit that well. Maintenance shop, probably not, but some of the other elements we'll bring back to you may also have some possible grant funding. So that is something we're considering.
And then a second question, because he's in the room. Will somebody be very kind and gently break the bad news to Deputy Chief Copeland that we won't be able to duck hunt back there?
The boardwalks will help get around.
There, there, I don't know if you've walked that river lately, but there are a lot of ducks on it right now.
He knows that.
He does, I'm sure. It's right behind his office.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Rommel?
So the, the dollar amount now that we've spent on engineering is 400 and what is it?
Three, sorry, 388, we haven't spent it all, but that's the contract. 388 plus 38, 38,800 is what we've spent, what we've already spent.
Right, but the, but we've got 388 and then the 10% contingency, which you said you've already.
We've spent the contingency in full, the 38,800.
So it's 388 plus 38?
Yes. And the 388, obviously, we're still in design, so we haven't spent it.
Yeah, yeah. So how big, how, what's the square footage of this maintenance building we're talking about?
It hasn't been established, but we did look at it with, particularly because of permitting requirements, we needed to get the, have some estimates. So I don't have a set footage, or square footage for you. We are trying to be sensitive to the site. We're not looking at a giant maintenance shop, nor are the other, we've actually scaled back the other buildings to make sure we're sensitive to costs. We don't have updated cost at all on the buildings and we don't have square footage at this point. So when, at, at a future date, of course, we're going to be coming back to you with that information.
So the 85,000 is, we don't know how big the building's going to be?
Well, the 85,000, about 57,000 of that is for the building itself. Then another 20-some thousand is for the boardwalk. And I, I likewise, I couldn't give you the length, the, the linear feet for the boardwalk. I don't have it. As far as the building goes, I don't have all the dimensions. There were some conceptual designs done, but I don't have them for you tonight.
And I'll just say, and from direction that I've provided to the working group, I, without specific square footage dimensions, the direction has been as small as we can possibly make it while ensuring we meet the storage capacity needs that exist for this field. And, and I'll note that while a lot of the other amenities that, that may be under consideration by the council, bathrooms, you know, playgrounds, boardwalks are something that the council will consider at a future date in the menu of options. The storage facility is really a must. And so certainly the council can entertain funding through the bond issuance or competing, you know, for dollars through the regular capital budget. But if we're going to adequately maintain the fields, as I think people expect, you have to have the equipment to do it and the equipment has to be stored somewhere. It really doesn't make operational sense to store it offsite somewhere else in town, given how frequently.
I'm not objecting to the building. I just am trying to see if we're getting value for dollar. It seems like a high price to, you know, a design, a building that has, is going to have no architectural integrity at all to it. I just, it just seems like a lot to me for that. I'm not sure what we're getting for it. So I would endorse Alderman Weber's comment that I think we need to push on this price a little bit. And can you tell me exactly where, there's that black square and the, and the white square? Where is the maintenance building? Is it that whole thing or just?
Well, well, I'm going to switch slides real quick, just to show you, this is actually from the, the concept. This is from the design that's underway. So you can see this is the detention area. It's proposed that the building be right in here and then parking would be on this end and storage. So again, this is not, this is just very preliminary. So again, this is not, this is just very preliminary, you know, it's not, it's not meant to say that the building is going to be exactly that large, but it's just to give you an idea, that's, that's it. So we've pulled the, we've put the storage area on this side.
So the storage is for equipment?
Outdoor storage.
Outdoor equipment? So we're going to have this, the outdoor equipment there that would be visible?
Not, not equipment, well, equipment for the sports fields. So things like nets, home run fence, that kind of stuff would be out there. We would not be leaving equipment to maintain the field out there, obviously, like, like utility vehicles, rakes, that would be inside. And one other clarification too, the cost of design is not just the architectural design, it also includes additional cost for the work with Hay and Associates. So they need to run the calculations, they've done some preliminary, but what, one thing we've learned very clearly is whenever you do anything on the site, there are other design implications, like permitting and things like that. So this does include all the permitting as well for the building and for the boardwalk.
Well, you know, just off the top of my head, I would, I would, I don't think be in favor of having that outdoor equipment stored where anybody could see it. I don't know how you, you know, from your design, it doesn't look like it would be adequately screened by anything unless you're going to put up a fence or something there to really screen it. I just, I'm not fond of looking at equipment which winds up being disorganized and disheveled and, and is not sightly at all.
With all due respect, this has not been designed yet.
Well, he's telling me that the outdoor equipment is going to be in that white area outside.
Actually, I don't know that that's true, because he's got another drawing over there that has different setup.
It still has the white area that he said the equipment is going on the east end of this, I believe.
But, you know, this is, you're, you're trying to design it when it hasn't been designed yet.
And I'll just say, if, if, I think what I'm hearing is the feedback is we want to ensure that it is adequately screened from the public, certainly, we can take that in consideration and do that as part of the design process.
Or maybe the building is even larger, and it incorporates that equipment inside in some fashion.
All things we can look at, I know that was discussed, but obviously, the, the more indoor space you create, the more expensive the project gets, but we'll balance all of those things throughout the process.
And then the other question I have is, in the original design that we looked at the, at the last meeting, there were, there was a playground, there was, there were ancillary buildings. Those have gone away, right?
No, we'll be presenting those to you as part of that à la carte menu. We'll be showing you some alternatives for where they could go. So the fitness pieces that is being looked at, the only reason it's not being talked about tonight, it's covered under the original design. So we'll be bringing that to you at a future date.
Okay.
Alderman Bushman?
Just to clarify some of the numbers, with the 388, which is the original cost that we were projecting for this, plus the 10%, now plus the additional 85, I guess I'm coming up to total cost that we're incurring for the architectural and engineering services by Hancock are $511,800. Is that a fair statement? One of the questions we've had all along through this, this issue has been environmental sustainability, environmental impact. Is that topic going to be covered in this engineering and architectural report? The environmental impact of the proposed project? Or is that somewhere else in the works?
When you say report, you're, you're talking about the design documents, the construction documents?
Well, I assume definitely we're going to get a design document from them, as you mentioned, to be able to put it out for bids, but is there anything either in that or other information we're beginning, getting from Hitchcock that relates to environmental impact?
Yes, absolutely, and we've directed them, actually, at the very beginning, when it came to building design, we wanted to incorporate features that were environmentally friendly, things like LED. So that was established from the beginning, and that applies to this new building as well. In addition, we have asked them to consider other things that may beyond the scope, things, things, I'm not suggesting these, but things like solar or different methods that would even be a higher level yet. What we've asked them to do is consider those and to price them separately, so that when we come back to you with that menu, we will be able to say, here is the base price of the building, and keep in mind, that base price will have many environmentally friendly things built into it. Then we're going to say, at a premium, if you're willing to approve it, we can do these as well. So that's all coming at a future date.
Okay, and obviously, it's, besides the environmental questions that are outstanding, we also had a question that I've had communication with staff on that I'll share with the council. At our last meeting, there was reference to Johnson Consulting doing work on identifying the field usage needs based upon the programming that we have here in our community. And I had asked them to share with me the report, and to be fair, you know, indicate it's not quite ready yet to be shared, and I understand that's still the case. Any idea when you will have information that the council can look at to better understand the demands that we have in terms of field usage at Deer Path?
Yeah, I can't give you a specific date, but certainly in the very near future, and more than happy, as I've communicated to you, to share that with the entire council, but, but pleased with how the reports coming together. I'll just say, I know there's a lot of other questions being raised about environmental components or other, other amenities, not specific to the design request tonight. I appreciate the council's interest in all of that, and I assure you, in due time, we're working, you know, as expeditiously as we can with the, the project consultants. There will be ample time to discuss all of that with the council, and so I want to assure you that while the request is much more narrow tonight, you will have opportunity to weigh in on all of those.
Thank you.
Alderman Novak?
Will there be an opportunity for us to test, touch, see the materials that are being considered?
We do have, we do have a lot of samples and stuff and, at municipal services, so either it could be, I don't know, a few...
Yeah, and again, I'll go back to what I just said, there will be absolutely ample time for the council to weigh in on all of those. I know staff has done a good job evaluating multiple options, and so I think what will come back to the council will likely be a formalized staff recommendation rather than three, four, five different samples and pick, but I would, I think at that time, the count, the staff will, will review how they came to the recommendation, recommendation they did. Certainly, that is something that has been discussed probably in greater detail with the advisory group, who's really tasked with getting into the weeds and the details on this. So that too will, will come in due time, and will probably be a standalone discussion point for the council.
But getting back to the question at hand, we, we told the staff that we wanted detailed design for all these additional things so that we could decide later on whether we wanted to include them or not, and this is, this is some of the additional things that, that, that we wanted pricing on before we made those decisions. And so it's, 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 that's what we're doing here. It's all it is. It's, it's...
That's staff, your staff's job.
So, but it, it's an additional thing that's requirement, right? I mean, it, it's a storage shed for equipment that you're going to need for maintenance, so it's not like an à la carte thing. It's almost part of...
There are other, there are other things though that are going to be more optional.
Yeah, sure, sure, but this seems important. So how much would you think, if you went to bid on this, to, you know, to somebody else, how much do you think you'd get? I mean, for, in terms of pricing, I mean, does this seem like in, a kind of reasonable amount to you, given all of your experience and the work of the team and others?
I, I think it is, and if, if we were to start from scratch, keep in mind, we would have to go to different groups, because as I mentioned, Hay and Associates is doing the environmental and the permitting and all of that portion. It would be hard to go to one and get this. They, they already have a knowledge of the site, and they've done a lot of the work already, so I think it is a very reasonable price. I don't think we'd do better by bidding this out at all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you approve?
Do I have a second?
Second?
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novak?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Freshland?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Firework?
Aye.
Oh, we're talking. Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is additional comments for discussion or comments by council members, anything that, anything anybody wants to raise? Okay, well then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.